In a virtual mode per Executive Order 2020-110. Before we get started with the agenda, I'd like to just remind board members that we are going to, once again, do the roll call voting for things that require approval that we would normally do with the voice vote, and to please watch your muting and unmuting when you are speaking, just in order to eliminate background noise and make the meeting more productive for everybody who may be joining in. That said, we will have the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have Mr. Dignan coming in right now.
Great. We'll give Ken a minute, Lisa, and then I'll ask for the roll call.
Yep, I'm here.
Great.
Mr. Cole.
Yep.
Here.
It's Cole here.
Yes.
Dignan?
President.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Kritzman?
She's in right now. Let's see, she's just connecting her audio. Sorry. Kelly, they just called you in. Can you say President?
Mr. Meadows?
Present.
Do we have Mr. Meadow?
Present.
And Ms. Schwannison?
I'm here. We have a full.
That's everyone.
We have a full quorum. I will make a motion to approve the amended agenda as was sent out before the meeting. Is there support?
Support.
So that was motion by Schwannison, support by Meadows. If we can have a vote, please, on the amended agenda.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Kritzman?
Yes.
Ms. McCully, I say yes. Mr. Me-
Yes.
Ms. Schwannison?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the first call to the public. The meeting, this meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose. I'm sorry, can people mute when they're not speaking? Thank you. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public for the purpose of conducting the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community meeting. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in the agenda. We have two calls to the public. This is the first one. If there are any members of the public who wish to address the board, if you can, please make yourself known to me, which I know is difficult over Zoom, but I will pause here and allow any members of the public. Okay, I will take that as there are no members of the public wishing to address the board at this time, so we will move on to the next item, which is a board clarification. There are none. We are now on to the consent items, and I will make a motion to approve the consent items as presented, keeping in mind that the closed session minutes were emailed separately to board members only prior to this meeting. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Schwannison, support by Dignan. May we have a vote, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. McCully, yes. Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Dignan?
How about yes?
Ms. Schwannison?
Yes. I see that Jacob is on Zoom call, and I think before we get into new business, I will pause, and Jacob, if there's anything that you'd like to talk about from a student council perspective, we'll give you an opportunity to do that. Jacob Medina, I should say.
I got nothing for student council. I'm just here to to get caught up on all the info.
Oh, great.
I'm here of my own volition.
I, you're welcome to do that. I just thought you were representing the student council, so great. Okay, cool. Sounds good. Okay, so we will move on to the first item of new business, which is a personnel item, and I will move to approve the hire of Hannah Lemons as a full-time elementary special education teacher at Step Four on the WLEABA salary scale with a hire date of August 10th, 2020, and a start date of August 17th, 2020. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Schwannison, support by Henry. Is there any discussion or things that we would like to talk about before we move to a vote?
I would just note that Hannah actually is on the Zoom call. We couldn't have her here in person, and we know that you sometimes like to see a face with a name. So Hannah waved, so they thank you for joining us.
Okay, great. If there are no questions on this, are there any questions from board members on this motion? Seeing none, may we have a vote, please?
Okay, Ms. Kritzman?
Yes.
Ali, yes. Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Ms. Schwannison?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Thank you all. Motion passes. Welcome to Whitmore Lake, Ms. Lemons. Hope you're happy here.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, I will make a motion to approve the COVID-19 Preparedness Plan as required per Michigan Executive Order 2020-142. Is there support?
Support.
It's a motion by Schwannison, support by Dignan. This will be an item for discussion. Mr. DeKaiser?
Yes, thank you. I'm gonna attempt to share my screen here and make a couple of comments about the Preparedness Plan. First and foremost, the document that you've received via email, again, just a few minutes ago, is what I would consider a boilerplate template that's given to us by the state. It's, it's not a very good user-friendly or parent-friendly document. It will have to be published after approval on our website at some point. But we recognize that it's not really the help people kind of grasp what it is you're actually approving tonight. Probably the most helpful of which is what we call our FAQ, which we update every week. And you know, you've been made aware of that, so in addition tonight, I just want to remind all board members that after approval, the plan gets submitted to the ISD, which then submits it to the State Superintendent and the Department of What we're gonna do is, what I'm gonna do rather is, I'm just gonna go over some highlights of the plan that I think are more appropriate for, if I can figure out what to do, for public consumption. Can you, can you guys all see that screen?
No.
Oh geez.
I just see your, I just see your lovely face, Tom.
Okay. Let me reconfigure. We've got to shut down here, guys. Laura, I'm just gonna communicate with you. You can hear me okay, right?
I can hear you. Yep.
Okay. Let's try it again. You still can't see it, can you, Laura?
I cannot see your screen, no. I see you, and I can hear you.
All right. Everyone, just give it me a second here. I got a green failure.
Yep.
Sorry about every, about everyone. I'm having issue with my technology. I'm gonna allow Maria to to take over as host, and then, oh, there she goes. You can see that now, right?
Yep, I can see your sides. Yep.
Thank you, Maria. So, again, our, our plan is, like I said, it's a boilerplate plan, and we don't really expect it to be the the place to go for parents. They certainly can read it. It's got a lot of boilerplate language in it, and we think that our FAQ is a better document for public consumption and parent answers, and so that's really the backbone of where we're putting forth most of our communication, but let's move on to slide two, Maria, and jump right in here. So, my staff and I have been operating under this assumption that if we could get into a position where risk factors for coronavirus were low, what we'd consider low risk, then an in-person option for our students would be the best option, we felt. Further, should we have to move into a remote learning situation like we did in the spring, we felt that the time with, with students early in the year to establish relationships and expectations for how to use the technology that we're going to be implementing in a remote situation, should we go to that, was critical. And so both of those factors kind of played into us establishing a goal to create an in-person environment in Phase Four. But we also did this under the guise that a lot of parents have concerns, and while we attempt to answer as many of them as we can, and a lot of them come in individually and sometimes en masse, we really just have to be respectful ultimately of a parent's choice, and if they don't feel comfortable with what we're doing, we wanted to respond to that, so we created another opportunity, a virtual academy, that we're still under construction, but it was something that we, we felt that a parent should have the option, so. So our goals were simple, just create this, an in-person environment. I say simple, but quite lengthy. Create an environment for in-person instruction within Phase Four with the ability to quickly move in and out of it should we go into a Phase Three environment, but have that option for a virtual academy. Next slide, please, Maria. So, again, our Phase Four plan, as documented in this Preparedness Plan that you are being asked to approve, does just that. It spells out how we will operate in Phase Four, what requirements, and there are every requirement that the roadmap to reopening schools has, we've included in our plan. Our goal was to separate students as much as possible in K4 so we could limit face mask use during instruction and create plans in grades five through 12 that allowed for minimal movement, and if we had to move often, we'd move kids in patterns, so we wouldn't have to mix students throughout the day. And you do that because if you you do by chance have a positive case, and the Health Department wants to evaluate, you can give them an idea of how kids move throughout the day and what their, their minimum and maximum exposures to kids might have been. And, again, I mentioned this before, this is still under construction, but for the last two weeks, we've been putting together what we think is a viable virtual academy. There's a lot of questions on this, and I want to get to that later on in the presentation. But let's move on to the next slide, please. So I mentioned the term "low risk." A lot of people don't follow the Health Department probably as closely as we are. They get their information maybe from a broader source, but we look at what we call microdata. Make, these are things that are happening right in our region, the northern part of Washtenaw County, the southern part of Livingston County. And within our region, within that region, cases have been low. They're, they're not nonexistent, but they're hovering in the 20 to 30 per day range, not the hundreds and thousands, thousand that you read about statewide. We're contributing to that, but in a very small amount. And we also look at what we call a positivity rate. In this region, we're just under two right now. And the governor has said repeatedly that if the state could get to a positivity rate, a consistent positivity rate of under three, then a Phase Five would be an appropriate rating. This region has been in, at, under two now for the last three weeks. So we feel our microdata has been, you know, supporting what we'd consider to be a low-risk environment. And we've also looked at community spread, and it's been nonexistent in our region to date. Further, our size, we, we feel that you know, bringing kids into an environment like some of the schools are, and bringing them in on like a Monday, and into a clean building, and then the building gets dirty, and then you move to Tuesday, and then you've got a more dirty building, and then maybe clean it on Wednesday. It, it works, I guess, but it doesn't work as well as we would like. We know we've got a smaller school. We believe that we can clean our facilities daily. In fact, every four hours, we plan on cleaning the building. And in some situations, we're cleaning classrooms every hour. You just can't do that in a bigger, a school of a bigger size, so we feel that's a factor contributing to an in-person environment. Our staff and student populations, while we we know that, you know, in our region, we have low cases and a positivity rate that's below two. We also know that some of our students do travel from up to 30 miles away. Some of our staff members travel from a distance, too, so you can't completely block out and just say, we're just in this region alone. You do have to look at outside the region and what's going on. But again, you're a small school district, you, you know your student populations, and you know your staff populations. They're not of significant size that you can't have that information, and right now, the people coming to us from out of Whitmore Lake aren't coming from areas where there's high cases or high positivity rates. We've also examined feedback from both our internal and external sources. Each time we put out an FAQ, we send it internally. We get feedback from our teaching staff and our non-teaching staff about the plans that we're trying to put forth. We want people to understand what it is we're trying to do and, and to gain a better understanding of how to approve it, and that's been going on pretty well now for the last three weeks. We're learning things from both our internal staff, and we're learning things from the parents we're communicating with, really trying to just bolster that, you know, that what we hang our hat on is good communication and good relationships with them. And finally, speaking of relationships, I mentioned this before, we a big factor contributing to our recommendation is just the, the need to have a connection established immediately with our students. If we can bring them into a low-risk environment and maintain that low-risk environment, then we think that's the best way to enact education early in the school year, teach them how to use the new technology that we're gonna rely on should we have to go to remote, and really build that relationship capacity with them. We don't believe you can really separate content delivery from relationship building, and that, that's a big factor in what we considered in this recommendation. Having said all that, I am letting staff know, and I'm letting you know, and the community know as well, that I very much consider the start of this school year a start in what I would say is a crisis mode. And certainly, there's a lot of fear going around, and it has an impact on, on parents and on students and on staff, so when we are in crisis mode, and we have been in the past for various reasons, one of the things that we immediately implement is kind of an end of, a start of day, an end of a day, a meeting to figure out what worked and what didn't work. And we think starting the, the first week of school, and what we call a soft start, gives our staff an opportunity to evaluate the first few hours of each day and figure out what's going well and what's not. I mean, we have mask protocols, we have break protocols, you know, drop-off and pickup protocols that have all been modified, and you couple into the, that, all the fear that people have, and you really are operating in a state of, of controlled chaos at times, and so just figuring out what worked and what didn't work is really important. That is something that we've done, like I said, in the past, and it's worked well, and I would also add that it's important for our staff members to go through this, too. It's not just a decision that I, I'm putting out there because of kids and parents. It's, you know, you're, you're working in education, and your, your first instinct, your first act really is to take care of kids, and I found, again, in crisis mode, at the end of the day, you really have to have an opportunity to take care of each other. And this is unusual time, so that's why I'm going with that soft start. One of the things we learned from a survey we just put out last week is that, you know, we are putting forth this online virtual academy, Michigan Virtual, or Whitmore Lake Virtual Academy, rather. And it's been populating a little bit more. It started off with, like I said, about eight to 10% of people are interested in it right now. You know, we, we've got about 15 to 18%, I believe, who are really, they want it. They're saying they want it. They don't really want in-person instruction. Got another group that's leaning toward it and clearly wanting more information. And from the comments, we, we've gathered that, you know, the majority of these people are in K8. Mostly, I would say, two through eight. But, you know, there are some people as low as kindergarten, one or two, that have expressed that they want it. And they really want, they're craving more information from us, and what they're saying in their comments is they, they they understand that we, we put out this idea that we'd be contracting our, an education program and delivering it to them, and their feedback back to us has been very clear. They'd really like more of a connection with WLPS teachers. So, you know, while I can't guarantee every single class would, would come from a WLPS teacher, clearly, that's what the parents are saying, so I have done some reconstruction over the weekend, working with a couple of vendors to see if we can't retool it and bring more of our teachers into it to give our parents who are are desiring this type of education more of a Whitmore Lake feel. So while I know it's frustrating for people who, who just want the information right now, I, I just feel it's, it probably needs its due diligence. There, I know what they want. There might be a way to get it for them, and I, I would feel, I would feel bad if I didn't at least try, so I'm kind of, I'm putting timelines aside for a moment and trying to get them a better program, but I do expect to have that, that cleaned up by the end of the week and and deliver the message and really just try to figure out who exactly wants that. Do you have any questions on that as a board? Again, I, you know, I know it's, it's something that you might be hearing about from people. Do you have anything relative to that that you want me to address? All right.
Well, if no one else has a question, I'm just curious on the cost associated with it. If we had WL teachers doing a lot of the content versus having to buy potentially a curriculum or something from others, does that impact financial or not?
I'm operating under the, under the assumption, Laura, that if I were to contract the entire thing at the enrollment figures that I'm currently presenting, that would have a price point of X, and and if I could blend in more Whitmore Lake teachers and still not exceed that contract amount, that's what I would do. So it wouldn't, I wouldn't be delivering to you something that has WLPS teachers and costs a lot more. It would be, it would be in the same ballpark of that number that we would have to contract out at. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, it, it does make sense. I was just curious, and then I know you prefaced this whole conversation, and I agree with you about the FAQ that Whitmore Lake has put out is likely more consumable for parents who may be wanting, excuse me, a more real-time view of what this could mean. But there's a couple of things that I wanted to ask about, which is, I mean, to be abundantly clear, this type of a virtual academy would be much more rigorous, would require, you know, more participation. There would be more requirements put on students than kind of how we left things in the spring, because the spring was sprung upon all of us, and nobody was really prepared. My question to you is, one, is that a true statement? And then, two, and maybe you've already done this in the FAQ, is kind of gone through, if you're making a commitment to a virtual academy, this is something that is a commitment, correct? You can't switch lanes. You know, I, I believe that there's a grace period. We try it for a couple of weeks, but then, at, at that point, because this becomes a resourcing and a budget issue for us to manage in terms of the school district, correct? I may be jumping ahead. I don't know.
Those are two good questions. First of all, your comment about kind of what the robust nature of an online, even a remote, if we have to go remote, I mean, what does that look like? Is it the same, and embedded within the plan that you're approving, it, yes, it is more robust. The springtime is not a real good comparison, and the board should understand that. We did have to go remote, but there were parts of the executive order that, that basically, you know, spared people from grading expectations, they guaranteed grade advancement, and none of that exists in this current plan. You know, we can say we're gonna fold, push forward a similar continuity of learning plan that we had in the spring, but it does come with advancement of curriculum. And, and we were going at a snail's pace in the spring. This, on the online work, even remote work, if the whole district goes to it, it, it doesn't come with those restrictions. We move forward, and we move forward at a pace that we expect kids to be able to, to maintain. And there are some exceptions. I mean, you're current, you're critically, I mean, you're in an online environment, so you have to slow things a little bit, but and then grading expectations. I mean, it's not just showing up. It's, yeah, you you have to deliver the work. It's quite a bit more robust. And so this simply to answer your question, the plan that I'm asking you to approve has those grading and content advancement elements within it. And then your your comment about choice is a big one. It's honestly, it's something I think that's really weighing on on parents' minds. And I'm really trying to be respectful of it because, you know, they it's hard to make a decision when you just don't know all the answers and and you, you know, one way that I've tried to make it easier for people, if they're just they don't feel that they're comfortable stepping foot right now or August 31st in a building of ours. And and they they just want to try something. They do have, right now, I've worked out a two-week agreement where they could bail away from it and it won't have a financial impact on the district. So I don't think I can get much more than two weeks, but I'm I'm working on that. And again, it's you know, it's just out of respect for the people that are asking for it. I'm trying to do due diligence with it. So no, no guarantees it'll go beyond two and that's but that's where I'm at right now.
Well, I think these are both important points to make across and make sure that folks on the board understand that because it is, it is going to definitely, and I'm glad to hear that there's going to be more rigor involved. I think that that is appropriate. So are there, I can't see people right now because the screen is only showing the slide, so I don't really know. Are if there are any other board members that have questions at this point on the virtual academy, can you guys speak up and make yourself known? I just, I can't see you. Go ahead, Ken.
Yeah, Tom, I I'm curious, when we look at that, where our teachers are going to be the teachers of record more so. Are we are we looking at vendors other than the vendors that everybody surrounding us is using? Or are we looking at primarily the exact same vendors that everybody around us is using?
Just for pricing and contract, I've just looked at vendors we've used in the past and those that are immediately around us. I'm not limiting myself to it, but the timelines aren't in our favor for that. But we we have looked out outside of those boundaries. We've, we've looked at all kinds of things, Ken, so.
I just know they're extraordinarily pricey when you're dealing with things in this area in comparison to some other options and products that are out there. And I know you guys do do your due diligence on that. I just, I I just wasn't aware that we could do a, our teachers as the teacher of record and still use those, the vendors that I'm aware of that are we are being used locally or ISD-wise.
Yeah, what I'm talking about when I say that is is definitely a hybrid approach to what normally gets done. It's probably unique to Whitmore Lake. And we have the capacity to to build it out. It's you know, like I said, it's it's not the easiest thing to do, but it seems like that's the the desire of the public. And so we want to take a good a real good look at it. And if it looks like we can do it and it's within our our price points, then I think you know, we could deliver and give people a good a good crack at an education with with something like that. And but yeah, you're you're right. It's it's not normally what happens in this situation.
Not not, not to harp on the finances, too, but this offering this is is great and appropriate, but it is definitely an unplanned expense against our general fund as well. We've already adopted a budget, so we already had that conversation, a meeting or two ago. But I just want to restate that as well.
And honestly, that's what led to my question. Because I know there are other products and offerings out there that are much significantly significantly less money if we are doing the teacher of record.
I have a, I have a question as well, too. So with the hybrid or potential hybrid, this is something you're still looking at possibly doing. So that would be a combination. As it stands right now, we are just planning on going back into full school, correct? And then possibly doing, doing a hybrid. Or it's still, it's still trying to put that together by the beginning of the year? Is that what the plan is?
I want to be careful with the term hybrid. It's actually in my slide, but I I don't like using it because it most school districts are using it in conjunction with how they're delivering in-person instruction. We are offering in-person five-day-a-week instruction. For the virtual academy, I'm trying to develop a hybridization of contracted delivery and using our own teachers to deliver some. And that, yeah, but it's, it is an added cost. You you have to pull those teachers out of the classroom and you have to replace them with somebody. Probably add a teacher to your payroll in order to pull this off.
And also, as you're saying right now, about 25% that they want to do the the virtual academy and what what kind of percentage are we looking at that still haven't responded? Are we still waiting to hear back from families that haven't answered one way or the other?
Yes, we're the latest figure, I mean, we're over 50% response rate, which is really good. But not 100%. Clearly, 75% of the people are most people want in-person. Most people who want virtual, it's kind of split between they want it, they're leaning toward it, they want more information. 25% is a combination number of 12 or 13, that 12 that are leaning towards it, they want more information.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I would assume that if we think we need to have more of a concept of what you're offering with a virtual academy, that the FAQ will at one time or another have that information?
That's correct. That's where we're going to start answering the questions. But we also, Lee, have a pretty good list of parents who directly want it. So we do both. We put it in the FAQ, we distribute it broadly. But then we're going to reach out to the people who say they want it and and give them, you know, more information more directly. So we're going to kind of hit them with both sides, just to make sure we we get the information as accurately as possible out to the people who want it.
Well, could you send that to me when you send it to the parents? I'd like to take a look at it.
Certainly.
Yeah, I I just don't have clarity in my own mind about how that's going to look. And I'd feel more comfortable if I had some clarity. That's all.
Yeah. And and I do apologize for not, I mean, it's describing it without having the people present that can speak to it and having a good pricing for you. So but I on anything, I'll be sending the the parents. I'm sending school board members as well. And certainly, I'd like you to understand it. I think you'll be happy with it. When I share it internally, it people are comfortable with it, but we we just have to get you know, we have to make sure it's it's good and viable. So we're doing some double checks. And then, like Mr. Dignan referred to, there, there is some pricing that you, you know, you can leverage and maybe bring things down a little bit lower. And so we are exploring those contracts further. Because when you're doing the bulk of the work, if someone's just giving you some things, you, they really shouldn't be charging you as much. And so those are all ways we we plan on keeping that price point low.
Yeah, my, I I'm not really concerned about the price point because I think you well, my trust for you in terms of the due diligence and the budget areas high. I just have a need to know kind of, since this kind of instruction is new to me as an educator of many years, I just feel too ignorant and I'd like to have a little information. That's all.
Sure thing.
Thanks.
Any other board members have questions up to this point? I don't know. How many more slides do you have, Tom?
Just one, I think.
Okay. Well, I guess why don't you finish out and then we'll go, I'll do a round robin of people to make sure everybody has an opportunity directly to respond. So why don't you just finish out your presentation?
All right, the next one's easy then. Really, I mentioned this before. Upon approval, I just want the board to be aware that this this plan does has to go to the, it does have to eventually make its way to the state. They don't approve it. They don't really do anything with it. You're the approving body. They're the accepting body. And of course, that goes to the superintendent, like I said, and the Department of Treasury. And you can imagine that they want to assure that if they're giving us funding for schools, that we're we're following safe patterns of instruction. And of course, we just spent a lot of time talking about this, developing the academy and communicating it appropriately. I would also like to add, and I I did touch on cleaning, but we are adding PPE supplies. We we've been working actually really well with Toyota has given us a lot of face masks and face shields. We're working with a local company on Plexiglas partitions for our offices. You know, better kind of creating quarantine spaces, which are called for in the plan. So our our staff members who are working with kids who are symptomatic can have some privacy and and, you know, and still kind of keep, keep spacing. So all those things are going on right now. And then we do have weekly meetings with Health Department officials. And we're going to continue to look on that, at that, what I call microdata. I don't know if that's a prevalent term, but that's the term I use because it really focuses on the Whitmore Lake area. And should anything change, we certainly will, you know, certainly update the board. It won't change what we have in our plan because our plan allows us to move in and out of these phases and instructional strategies as we as we see fit based on the safety recommendations of the Health Department. So you're not locked into anything if, if, you know, even if we're in phase four, so.
Okay, if that's the end of the presentation, if we can go back to where I can see the people, that would be great. Thank you. I'm going to do just a quick round robin to every board member. I want it's difficult to manage these sometimes over Zoom. I want to make sure that everybody, if they would like, has a chance to ask questions on the preparedness plan. So just let me just kind of go through everybody. Lee, you already asked a question or two. Are you good or do you need, do you have anything else?
Just in terms of the microdata and positivity rates and also what happens if we get some positive results? Do we have a specific plan as to what criteria we're going to use to determine whether we need to go to virtual instruction? Or we can continue to do in-person instruction?
Again, just to use the right terminology, if we have a positive case, we will work with the Health Department to determine if we go into a remote learning environment. Virtual and remote to me are different, different things. So Lee, there's not a a clear-cut answer from the Health Department. They don't tell you going into it what it's going to be. The law says that you have to work with them. They have stated that one positive case does not necessarily mean you go into a remote environment. One positive case gets evaluated. And if you can set up, if you're setting up your buildings with with spacing and maintaining their low-risk factors, then you may just, you know, be quarantining a student or two. But we've certainly set it up in a way that if we had to, we could quarantine maybe a grade and go remote with an entire grade if possible. So it's, the options are numerous. They're not being specific with us. That's the best way I can answer your question right now. I can just tell you that we planned for it and we plan for multiple scenarios.
Lee, anything else you'd like to ask at this moment? You good? Okay. Lisa, any questions that you'd like to add or ask about?
I think I am good for right now. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Ken Dignan, Ken, anything?
I'm all set. Thank you.
All righty. And Bob Henry?
One of the things, Tom, are all the teachers on board on all this? Or do we have some especially older teachers who may have a you know, another type of medical problem that, are you hearing anything from them?
It's not really age-specific. There are people who have some some health concerns. There are some staff that have that, you know, that have some family at home that have some health concerns. You know, and while they're not saying they're not going to come in, they 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 are concerned. You know, we've got some teachers that are caring for young children that have been in the hospital for a long time. And, you know, we're really trying to be careful that we don't bring those staff members into an environment, you know, that that they could bring something home or bring something to us, you know. So yes, we have been talking to them. We're building into our criteria for who would work the online schooling, some of those factors. So, you know, these are, if we say we need two, two and a half teachers to run this based on the number of students, just for instance, I'm just giving you an example, Bob. You know, the, you know, we'd have to see who would would be interested in that from our teaching ranks. And we're trying to factor in what kind of situations they might have. Clearly, if somebody is you know, got a health situation at home or something like that, we we want to give them you know, some advantage to get these positions. We're also looking at special ed numbers, things like that. It's not, this is not just a general ed virtual situation, but I guess to show, answer your question shortly, yes, we've, we've, of course, listened and asked and listened to their concerns.
All right, that's all I have.
Thank you, Bob. Shelley?
I had a question within the document that you sent out. You didn't discuss it in the PowerPoint, but in the document, it says that if you're at close quarters for more than 15 minutes, if someone tests positive and you're in close quarters for 15 minutes, that they recommend quarantining. Who's going to be the one to make that decision on who's close less than six feet for more than 15 minutes to determine if staff or children should be quarantined?
We would actually let the Health Department view the classroom where the positive case came from. You know, some of our class sizes have actually gone down. If if current numbers stay the same, some of our class sizes go down because of virtual enrollments and things. So it is possible that every classroom in our district might have six feet of separation. But they would want to see that. They're very clear that they don't make the decision. But they, I, they would say to me, like, this is an environment that, you know, these four desks have to be, you know, we we think that's too close. And then I would make that decision on who couldn't come into the classroom based on their their feedback.
Okay, thank you. And then, so it does look like we're going to have most of our classrooms at six feet? Or is that kind of a unrealistic goal?
It's, we're getting closer to it. That's the best I can answer your, answer the question right now. You know, class sizes, again, when you, when people are choosing, if all of the people that say they are leaning toward or choosing virtual, I mean, it's not a lot, but it brings a few kids out of each class and the class sizes are already pretty small. You know, so if if that holds true, Shelley, then some of your classrooms, yeah, you're you're big enough if you spread everything out that you're, you're certainly five and six feet apart. And I mean, that's already true at the high school. That's a bigger building. So you know, I can't answer definitively right now because these are just surveys and they don't, you know, we don't know till the butts are in the seats, we say. But if the numbers hold true, then we we look really good. We look like we can space out in all of our classrooms.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had.
Thanks, Shelley. John, questions?
Um, yeah. First question is about the virtual academy. And to my understanding, that is a semester-long commitment for the student?
That's correct, John. At, like, we talked about grace periods, but once you pass that that two-week mark, that's it really, it's not advisable to come back in to an in-person environment. You you wouldn't be on track.
Right.
Again, we're always looking at that grace Again, we're always looking at that grace period, how long it can be. But, yeah, we are advising parents that if you make that decision, prepare, do it with the idea that this is going to be a semester.
If, so if a student decides, okay, I'd like the virtual academy, halfway through, they decide they're going to back out, we're on the hook for those dollars for that semester?
We don't have to let them in. We don't have to change their educational plan. If they've decided and we get, like, all the way through October and we're rolling into November and they say they want to come back, they, they don't get to, they have to stay.
Okay.
Choose not to do anything, but then they're choosing essentially to give up content and to fail. And, but yes, either way, you're on the hook for those dollars.
Okay. The next question I have is about masks, and I guess, from, I was visiting with a few friends at work today, and they were talking about their clarity with the mask rules. If, I mean, I guess kind of go into it, if a student shows up in a classroom, decides, my parents say I don't have to wear a mask, is the teacher going to say, okay, Joey, head down to the office and you're going to talk to the principal? Kind of go through that scenario with us.
Okay. So, teachers, again, have a process, they'll do their due diligence, but if a student just flat out is not wearing a mask and there's no supporting documentation to allow for the mask not to be worn at certain times, then the teacher will contact an administrator, a health officer, we're supposed to call them, and that student will be escorted out of the room and brought into a quarantine area and, and have to be sent home.
Okay. And then, so at that point, they're sent home, do we have a conversation with the parents and say, you know, these are our rules, if we can't abide, we need to, we need to alter your student's plan?
Yep, we'll put forth what we call like a responsibility contract, and parents and student will have to sign off on it, teacher and administrator approve it, and if everyone's on the same page, then the student comes back, fine, no problems. If we can't come to that agreement, again, in this context, with everything on the line, safety and everything, if we can't come to that agreement, I feel it's necessary to put that student into a different educational plan, and our different educational plan would be an online environment.
Okay. Okay. I think that's all the questions. I, I had one more, but I, it's off the radar, so thank you.
Thanks, John. I have a couple of things. First, I want to thank Tom and all of the other many people who have worked very hard to put this together. I fully understand that information changes on daily, hourly basis at times, and I know it's hard, and I know it's really hard. I know that people want concrete answers, and it's very difficult to do that, given the fact that we just don't know. There's still, even, even on this date, August 10th, there's still just a lot of unknowns. So I just want to say, I really appreciate on behalf of the board, the work that the administration and teachers have done to bring us thus far. I also appreciate the fact that you look at microdata. I look at the same types of data points in my own geekdom that I have here, and I think it's important that we look specific to what we have in Whitmore Lake and in our own community. So I appreciate the fact, Tom, that you are looking at those data points as well. It's easy to get pulled in different directions with that. So the two questions that I have, one is, Bob asked about staff earlier, and I just want to make sure that our staff is on board with a face-to-face instruction and virtual plan, the two options we have. Of course, I'm more interested in what the staff are thinking with face-to-face because we need to have comfort and feelings of security and those types of things for everybody who comes into the building. So that's my one question. And my second question is really, have you heard anything from the state about pupil accounting? Because I think that's an important piece to this puzzle, too. Thank you.
And just to comment on the staffing question, you know, it's a lot like the parent situation. You know, they, they're appreciative of the information we're giving them. The more information we give them, the more comfortable they get. You know, when we had our first situation, meeting, we, we shared a lot of information about cleaning and protocols, and it seemed to put a lot of people's minds at ease, you know, and then, you know, just knowing that we're trying to work with them on situations that might, you know, get in the way of their, of their work, you know, they're, they're appreciative of that. Again, it, I don't know that we can take care of everyone's needs, we're not guaranteeing it, but, you know, they're, they're part of the team, so, you know, you take care of the team as best you can. The pupil accounting, oh, they're still, they're still somewhat silent on it. There's, I believe the governor will be making some comments about how funding works at the end of the week. I don't think she's going to change phases, I don't believe that. I think her comments are going to be focusing on how we fund schools during this crisis and continue to fund them because a lot of the things we're talking about, I mean, they're, you almost have to ignore some of the rules to put these plans together, and we don't burden the parents with pupil accounting manual rules. If anyone wants to read the pupil accounting manual and you're a parent out there, please be my guest. But they really do, they're inhibiting progress, and I'm hoping that the leadership in Lansing just comes out and says like this, you know, this is how it's going to be. Don't, don't worry about it. Put the best, safest plan forward. Do what works in your community. We'll get back to pupil accounting in 2021. So, but the short answer, Laura, is no, I haven't heard it yet directly from the governor's mouth.
Okay, well, if you get any, if you get any insight from your superintendent magic superhero friends, definitely pass along to the rest of the board, please.
Certainly.
So one last call out for any questions before we vote to approve the COVID-19 preparedness plan? Is there?
I've got one more quick question.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
One more quick question.
Yep.
Tom, I know that when a student wants to come in midterm, we have the ability to do a tuition-type situation. Would that be the case if a parent decided halfway through that they wanted to go in-person versus virtual, that they could potentially partake in a tuition scenario?
It's possible. Yeah, it's possible. It's one of the things we're looking at, because parents are just, you know, like, I don't know, I don't know. What, what if I make the wrong decision? You know, it's, there are some possibilities where you could factor in a tuition basis, like, if we don't lose anything on it, then if, and we can ensure, you know, a cohesive pattern of instruction, then why not? But, again, there are some, there are some legal obstacles you can't really charge. It's, this is, this is still a free education system. But yes, there are, within the codes of schools, there are tuition blurbs. You're, you're right about that. I know you know about that. So we're looking at.
Sorry, guys. All right. All right, I'm all set. Thanks.
Okay. Any, any, any board members have any other final questions? Hearing none, let's have a vote, please.
Okay, I say yes. Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Ms. Schwannerson?
I vote yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Dignan?
I vote yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Kritzman?
Yes.
Great. Thanks, everybody. Motion passes. And of course, I will say, I've told this to Tom before, too, but I think we are all realizing that if things need to adjust or change, that we can all support that as well. So thank you again for the work putting this together. I think we have a good path forward for our students and our community. Next item on the agenda is the 2020, 2021 school calendar. Excuse me. I will make the motion to approve the 2020, 2021 school calendar that has been presented as Attachment 3. Is there support?
Support.
Motion by Schwannerson, support by Meadows. Is there any discussion on this? I mean, we are adopting it with the, without the half-days that Tom just talked about, which is fine. He has purview to make that adjustment. Is there anything that Tom, you wanted to highlight? Any questions or are we, anything to discuss?
No, just that it's, you know, noted that you just said we didn't reflect the calendar, the calendar does not reflect the half-days, and the calendar is unusual because we don't even know what the state's going to require from us. But I'm assuming that they're going to require 180 days. That's the, that's really what they'll say as a minimum, and this calendar does reflect that, so.
Okay. Let's have a vote.
I have a question. Quick question about if, is the calendar something you would have to amend if, if for some reason you had to close schools for a week or something, or you're, you know, your remote learning, something happened, is that something you would amend, or is that, is this for the year unamendable?
It depends a little bit on the governor's next executive orders, but I'm not anticipating we'd have to amend it. If we had to shut down for a few days, you could use act of God days, similar like we use in snow days. You know, you get sick, and you could certainly skate through a week if the state doesn't change anything. But then you've, you left yourself vulnerable for the winter time. So I'm, while not reflecting it in the calendar explicitly, I do believe that the governor will put an executive order that doesn't hold us accountable if we move in and out of these phases. Again, it's back to Laura's comment about pupil counting, they, they just haven't said it yet, that you'll have to make up all your days. But if you're doing, if you put forth a plan that has remote learning as an element, we believe that we will be granted leniency in that regard.
Thank you.
Any other questions on the calendar? Let's move to a vote, please.
Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Ms. Schwannerson?
I vote yes.
Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Kritzman?
Yes.
I vote yes.
Calendar is approved. Mr. DeKaiser, superintendent's report?
Okay. Just a few updates. You know, we're rolling along with our technology. We've got classroom technology up and pretty much installed everywhere in the district. These are these interactive boards. We're abandoning a laser projector approach, we're going more to these interactive boards, and we're, we're outfitting every learning space with them. Those along with Chromebooks are kind of the crux of our new technology enrollment that will allow us to be more flexible with remote learning should we need to do that. We've got most of our machines in, but we're still waiting on about 300 Chromebooks. We're expecting them to come in, in the next couple of weeks. We've had to pay more for them than we expected, but we felt it was important that we had all students accounted for at the beginning of the year with those devices. I'll pause if anyone has any questions on those. If I don't hear anything, I'll just keep going. I also shared with our, a committee that we, we did modify to some degree what we planned on spending out of community rec and out of sinking fund in the pool. We had done some upgrades over the closure to the pool. We were planning on adding some, some more energy savings upgrades to the pool, but because the pool's just not been in operation, we didn't think that was an appropriate expenditure at this time. We had priced out at some point a basketball court at the elementary school. When we redid the parking lots and put the playground in, we had to remove a basketball hoop or two, and we never replaced them. So we are working with a vendor. We're working on some, some bidding right now to make sure we've got good pricing, but we believe by the time school starts at the elementary school, we'll have a new basketball court ready for the kids, which will be helpful as it will add another zone where we can put kids for outdoor time. Security cameras have all been installed. There's a couple that are not working, but we're moving forward anyway without the training, and we'll just repair those as we, as we need to. But they're, they're good to go, and we're finalizing our payments and everything on those. And then finally, there's been some comment, commenting on staffing, and, you know, do we have, what are enrollment needs and things like that? I do want to let you know that, you know, we are looking carefully at it. We've seen some upticks in enrollment, some school of choice have come in, districts have said they're, they're not going to open to in-person instruction, and most of the enrollments have been in the kindergarten area, it looks like. It's likely we'll add another section of kindergarten if the enrollment holds at this time. We're, we're giving it some time to play out, but we are, you know, preparing budgets for you to note that change in our staffing. We think it's important that we start this year with as low a class sizes as possible in all grades, so. But, yeah, if current enrollment holds, expect me to bring forth a kindergarten recommendation soon. That's it for now. I'm sorry, I went through those really fast, but I've been talking a lot, so I'll certainly entertain any questions on that, if you want me to expand on anything.
Are there any questions from board members on these items?
I have a quick question. How, where do you estimate, how many, how many new school of choice students do you think you have right now?
Again, most of them came in the kindergarten area, I would say, in total. John, just do, do my best. I'm going to say we probably added about 20 students overall. They seem concentrated in kindergarten and then spread out, you know, one or two in each grade.
Okay. So the, the pupil accounting thing could be a big factor, possibly, whether they do it or not?
Yeah. It, you know, we've lost kids, you lose kids over the summer. It looks like we're gaining right now, but, you know, we haven't taken kids out of our system. Part of our survey asked people if they're coming back. It's, you know, the number that, that said they're not is small, like 1%. So it looks like we'll be a gaining district this year. Not, you know, significant. Like I said, it looks like it's concentrated at the lower levels, but if they freeze our enrollment and pay us state foundation allowance based on last year's enrollment, we'll probably be breaking even. We might even be on the losing end of that a little bit.
Take it off.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. I thought I was just going to ask something, but I forgot. Okay, no other questions on the superintendent's report? Okay. We're on to other information. So the following people have recently submitted their resignations, bus driver Peggy Wales and middle school, high school kitchen manager Kim Poole. I'll pause here if there's any questions on that. Okay. Announcements, the next regular meeting of the Board of Education will be held on Monday, September 14th, 2020, at 7:00 in the High School Media Center, unless an executive order still requires a virtual meeting mode. We are at the second call to the public. If there are any members of the public who would like to, excuse me, address the board, please make yourself known to me by... We are at the second call to the public. If there are any members of the public who would like to, excuse me, address the board, please make yourself known to me by, I'm not sure, probably just speaking up, I'll pause here.
They could, they could put it in the chat, too, if they, um, no, I don't know if they can or not. Speak up, please, speak up.
I think I would rather have somebody speak if they, if they would like to address the board.
Yeah, I think that's appropriate, I'm sorry, you're correct.
Not hearing anybody speak, we will move on to board member reports. I will start with just one quick item, which is, we won't get into a lot of detail about this now, but each board member should have gotten an email regarding our funding of scholarships for the community scholarship program. In years past, we've been able to fund two students by selling squares at football games, which now, don't even know if the Big Ten's even playing this year, so a lot in flux. I don't think that we can really count on that. The purpose of why I'm bringing it up right now is that if we as a board want to continue this practice, two things need to happen. One, we need to establish a smaller group of us to try to figure out a plan for how to raise those funds. I mean, thankfully, Shelley has done this essentially on her own for the past several years and I personally thank you for doing that, I know it's a labor of love, but it shouldn't have to be on one person to do that. And the second thing is that if we want to continue this with the scholarship, it's going to have to be, you know, all hands on deck, meaning everybody is going to have to find a way to contribute and, and do this, even though it could be challenging to either sell a raffle ticket or whatever that ends up being. So I wanted to just make sure that board members were thinking about this. And, um, here's my homework for you all is, um, if you would like to work with Shelley on trying to figure out how to do this fundraising, please reach out to either her or myself and let us know. Really need to have more than just one person trying to figure this out. Or, second, if this is just something that you would not like to support anymore, which is certainly an option, please email me or text me or contact me directly and let me know that, because we're going to have to do this slightly differently this year. So just anyway, look for more to come on that topic, I just wanted people to be aware that, um, that's what's going on there. And that was all I wanted to say, except again, thank you to Tom and everybody for your hard work. Also, I'll just mention, it's great to see, um, parent participation on our board meetings and I would love to see you all in person when we can go back to doing that. So hopefully, we can see that. So I will ask now the other board members to report out, Mr. Cole?
Have nothing at this time.
Okay. Mr. Dignan?
Uh, I'm all set, Shelley can reach out to me, I, I'd be interested in helping out with the fundraising aspect of that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Henry?
I just have a quick question for Tom, if you've heard anything from the MHSAA recently?
Yeah. Despite what has been rumored, I mean, despite the MAC closing and the rumors of the Big Ten closing to sports and football, uh, they are saying they're, they're moving forward, their assessment is, uh, overall as a state, they can pull this off, um, and that their situation is different than the universities and they feel comfortable.
I did see that Ohio, as a matter of fact, I saw this today, that Ohio high schools are now being cut back to six football games.
Yeah.
And everybody makes, and everybody makes the state playoffs.
We're expecting a shortened season in volleyball and in football, they haven't explicitly said that yet. And again, I, I think that might come on Friday.
All right.
Mrs. Kritzman?
Uh, I just wanted to say again, thank you for all the work that you've done, this, putting together this plan is something that is extremely time-consuming, um, and there's so many moving factors and so I appreciate all the work you've done. And then just keep keeping the, keeping us as parents, us as board members and as parents updated as much as possible. If everyone's a little nervous about sending their kids back, I'm sure the staff's a little nervous about going back, so the more information that you can provide, the better our decisions are and we can, and I appreciate that, but, uh, you're doing a great job, but I just want to make sure that it continues to be put out there and, and trying to get it to as many people as possible. That, that's a big concern because not everyone's on social media. So I know you put the Zoom meetings out, but sometimes people don't see that and if it goes on Facebook, there's some pretty inaccurate stuff going around Facebook. So, um, we'd like to try to keep it, people on task and, and focused on what's correct.
Understood.
Mrs. McCully?
Uh, yes. I, again, also want to thank, um, everybody for working so hard on this. I know it's, um, certainly not an easy task, not, uh, not, not a normal summer, but, so thanks for everything you've done. And, uh, yes, Shelley, I had a couple of, um, thoughts on, um, fundraising and thank you for always handling that, but yeah, I'd be, be willing to help as well, so, that's all.
Fantastic, looks like we have a little committee already situated, so that's good. Uh, Mr. Meadows?
I would like to participate in the scholarship fundraising also. I'm a team player on that, I think it's important to continue that tradition. And then also, I'd just ring in and say thank you to Tom and the staff and all the teachers and everybody for going into this with an optimistic mindset and there is a lot of anxiety and, you know, we need to just be, be as flexible and optimistic as we can be and I think we have a, a, a good opportunity to do good things for our students here in Whitmore Lake. So, thank you, keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Okay. I will make a motion to adjourn at 7:18 PM, is there support?
Support.
No one?
Support.
Okay, so that was motion by Schwannerson, support by Meadows, may we have vote, please?
Uh, Mr. Cole?
Yes.
Mr. Dignan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Kritzman?
Yes.
I vote yes. Mr. Meadows?
Yes.
Ms. Schwannerson?
Yes. We are adjourned, thank you all for your participation, good night.
Good night, everyone.